This regular meeting of Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:30 PM. Tuesday, June 1st, 2021, virtually, in Room 137 at the Edison Building, with colleagues participating electronically in accordance with Minnesota Statute 13D .021 until further notice. Members of the public are currently not permitted to attend these meetings physically due to COVID-19 pandemic recommendations. Interested members of the public are welcome and encouraged to view this meeting remotely at youtube.com/IST535 where the livestream video can be found. We acknowledge that our P.S. sites are situated on ancestral lands of the Dakota People. We acknowledge and honor the Dakota Nations and the sacred land of all Indigenous peoples. Present at this meeting are School Board members Superintendent Michael Munoz, a non-voting ex officium member, and Assistant Board Clerk Ms. Michelle Severson. Ms. Severson, would you please call the roll?
Thank you. Clerk Amundson.
Here.
Director Barlow.
Here.
Director Garcia.
Here.
Director McLaughlin.
Here.
Chair Marvin.
Here.
Chair Vice Chair Nathan.
Here.
And Treasurer Workman.
Here.
Thank you.
2.01, Approval of the Agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Item 3.02, Incubator EDU Winners Announcement has been added to the agenda.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Prival Amundson.
Second.
Second, Workman.
And a second. Ms. Severson, would you call the roll?
Thank you. Director Barlow.
Aye.
Director Garcia.
Aye.
Director McLaughlin.
Aye.
Director Marvin.
Aye.
Director Nathan.
Aye.
Director Workman.
Aye.
And Director Amundson.
Aye.
Thank you.
3.01, Under Announcements and Communications, New Principal Introductions. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, at this time I'll turn it over to Carl Bachan, Executive Director of Human Resources. Carl.
Good afternoon, Board Members. I am very pleased to announce two new principals that will be starting in the district for the 21-22 school year. First of all, it is my pleasure to introduce Nate Walbrook as the new principal of Century High School. Mr. Walbrook is returning to Rochester and is a Mayo High School alumni. Mr. Walbrook brings a variety of educational work experiences as a social studies teacher and an administrator in North Carolina. He previously also served as an assistant principal at John Marshall High School from 2014 to 2016. Most recently, Mr. Walbrook was the principal at Plainview Elgin Millville High School, and we look forward to having Mr. Walbrook rejoin our team and welcome him back to the district. I'm also pleased to announce the hiring of Steve Willman as the new principal of Elton Hills Elementary. Steve's more recent educational experiences include being an administrative assistant at Mayo High School and an assistant principal at John Marshall High School for nine years. Steve next spent five years at Byron High School as the principal. Most recently, Steve has been the assistant principal at Sunset Terrace, and this year he served as the interim principal at Elton Hills for a majority of the school year. So we welcome both Steve and Nate, and I invited both of them to be here. I'm hoping they're able to join us tonight.
Steve or Nate, would you like to say a couple words? How about we go Steve first? Steve, you want to go first?
Sounds great. It's absolutely a wonderful pleasure to return back to the Rochester schools and see the wonderful things that we're doing. It's been a joy to work with the Elton Hills community and the families and the kids and the teachers. It's been a wonderful experience, and a whole lot of work is ahead of us. But working hand in hand together, we'll be able to get the equity work, the work around kids, and to support students through all the things that they go through in their elementary years. So it's a lot of fun, really enjoyed the experience thus far, and look forward to many years at Elton Hills.
Thanks, Steve. Nate?
Hey, everybody. Nate Walbrook here. When I took over at John Marshall, I had to follow in Steve Willman's footsteps, which is no small feat. And he's awesome, and so I'll go second behind him on this one as well. I probably, like at JM, I won't do as good a job as he did nearly. But I am super excited to come on back to Rochester, and I'm super excited to be part of the Century team. I look forward to doing great things together as a team, working hard for the benefit of all students, and we won't stop until we can guarantee high learning at Century High School for all kids.
Thanks, Nate.
I would also like to thank the board and everybody else for giving us this opportunity, so thank you very much.
Well, Mr. Willman and Mr. Walbrook, welcome and welcome back. Congratulations, and we really look forward to working with you. And Mr. Willman, it's nice to know that you already have this fan principal at Century. So whatever you've done, you did it right, apparently. Anyway, we're really pleased to have both of you. Thank you. Moving on to 3.02, Incubator EDU Winners announced. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, at this time I'm going to turn it over to Brenda Witchman, Executive Director of Curriculum Instruction, and she'll introduce our guest today. Brenda?
It is always fun to share the amazing things that our staff and students do. So for information about our recent incubator EDU pitch night, I'm going to turn it over to our number one incubator EDU teacher, coach, and supporter, Mike Hutchins.
All right, thank you, guys. I also just really appreciate the time to come here and just really talk about the amazing students we have here at, as I say, John Marshall, but Rochester Public Schools in general. So yeah, so the incubator EDU class, both of you are unaware, it's an entrepreneurship program that the students have been working on throughout this entire year, as difficult as it has been this year with the distance learning, but they've all just done amazing work. And if any of you caught the pitch night that happened on Wednesday, the students were amazing and did just fantastic work. So I actually have one student from each group who presented on Wednesday here. And so I'm just going to have each of the students just share, just take about, you know, 30 seconds to a minute, just share their product, their journey this year, and just kind of how the whole class went for them. So I'll just pick them out, make them do it in order, so not this weird awkward silence. Charlie, I see Charlie's up there first. So Charlie DeRosier, can you please introduce yourself and your product and all that stuff?
Yeah, hello. My name is Charles DeRosier. I am a part owner of Houdini. We are built off of a sweatshirt, so we prevent your sweatshirt strings from coming out of the hood lining and from becoming uneven through time and getting all tangled up and all messed up. Incubator was a really fun class this year. I had a great time. Although we were online, it kind of sucked. It was awesome to eventually go in person and start doing the work.
Hey, Charlie, do you also want to tell them who else was in your group, just so they know?
Yeah, sorry. My other two partners are Carson Mueller and Isabel Osman, who are at work, so they can't be here today.
And then Houdini was funded for $4,000 for the other night, and so I'm very excited to see what their next steps are along their journey, because they're all going their separate ways to different colleges next year, so we'll see. I'm very excited to see what they do. All right, next up, we will go to Nina Munoz. Nina?
Hi, everyone. I'm Nina Munoz, and myself, along with Nolan Gora and Isabel Velasquez, created MagnaBox, which is a business and a product that you can attach to your outlet that will keep your charger intact so that it doesn't get pulled out of the outlet.
And then Nina's group was also was funded for $6,000 from the other night, from our board advisors as well, and excited with their next steps, too. Then last up, we have Kassar and Neta, who I know his connection is being a little weird, so hopefully everything will be okay for us. So Kassar, it's all yours.
Hi, my name is Kassar, and I'm a member of Quorum Team, along with Corey Smith. Our product this year was an application called Music Quorum, which fits on music connection and collaboration for young and upcoming independent artists who have better opportunities to start career. And for me, the incubator class is really awesome because I have to learn a lot more about problem mitigation and solutions as well as collaboration and working virtually. And also, I think I was just going to say this, but we got the $6,000 as well, and that covers ourselves. I'm excited.
All right, thank you, Kassar. Yeah, so it was an amazing experience this year, and the students just did so fantastic. So if you have not had a chance to go and catch the pitch night, I know it was recorded and Adrian put it up on the YouTube channel, so please check it out. They've done fantastic work. So thank you all for the opportunity and for everything else this year.
Thanks, Mike. And just a couple things for the board. The concept behind incubator is you, once they learn the design process, they're charged with solving, developing a service or product to solve a problem. And that's, they work as teams. We have adult entrepreneurs in our community to come in and serve as coaches to help them along the way. So yeah, it's an exciting class, and it's, as you heard, some of the things that the students said, they really hit on our graduate profile, which we're trying to accomplish. So thanks for, Mike, for bringing this forward tonight.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Mike. It sounds awesome. I'm going to go get a sweatshirt with strings. I don't own one, but I think I need one now that Houdini exists, so. And those other products are amazing. When I was the age of these kids, I was babysitting for $0.50 an hour. Clearly never learned to work with kids very well, but anyway, thank you so much. This is an exciting program. Amazing.
Chair Marvin?
Yeah, Mr. Barlow.
Can I ask Mr. Hutchins a quick question? So, Mike, how can other district students, you know, who perhaps viewed the presentation or are watching? or are watching uh, tonight, uh, they're hearing about incubator EDU, uh, how do they become eligible? What uh, should they do? Is there a pathway uh, for their participation or involvement?
Um, the only really specifications that are required are that they're a junior or senior who are in the Rochester area, to be honest with you. Um, so, these students are almost all seniors. Nina uh, is a junior. Um, and then we also, and one, and one of the students, Nolan, is actually from Schaefer Academy, so he just, he, he is open enrolled just for this one course to be able to do. Um, so really like, that, that's the only requirement is, um, it's really like the time commitment for the students, because the class itself is uh, it's a two-hour block, because you know, it's C-Tech class, uh, all year round. And so, um, all it is is registration, and so students who are interested, if you talk to your guidance counselor, uh, your school counselor, they can help you uh, to, you know, work through it, put it in your schedule, and then you can be a part of incubator next year.
Thanks, Mike.
Any other questions? All right, again, Mr. Hutchins, thank you so much. This is, it's really exciting. Great future.
Thank you so much, guys.
Next, three point oh three, board committee updates. Do board members have any updates on committee work in which they've been involved? Ms. Nathan?
I'm just gonna give a short one, because you're going to get the results of the CCIAC Community Curriculum and Instruction Advisory Committee work tonight in Agenda Item uh, five point oh one, when you hear about the sixth grade science curriculum. So I'm not gonna steal any of their thunder, but that's what CCIAC worked on this month.
Thank you. Anybody else? Very quickly, Ms. McLaughlin and I have been meeting with the student school board. Our last meeting of the year with both the middle school students and the high school students involves some great feedback about what students want to change for next year, uh, topics that they wanted to discuss. Uh, we're thinking that we will get a student group together this summer to set the agenda about how things will work going forward. And on, uh, another note, and a few of us from the board administration were able to attend the Class of Twenty Twenty-One LEAP graduation. That's Launching Emerging Adults Program uh, for uh, adult-aged students uh, who are uh, have gotten a special program uh, in order to be successful as they transition from public school to uh, life beyond public school and careers. And it was an exciting, exciting, and very rainy, but exciting uh, evening uh, for all of them, and for those of us who were able to attend. Anybody else? All right, then we will go to uh, the consent agenda. Are there any items to be removed for a separate consideration?
Move approval, Workman?
Second, Amundson.
It's been moved and approved. It's been moved and approved. It's been moved and seconded. Ms. Iverson?
Thank you. Director Garcia?
Aye.
Director McLaughlin?
Aye.
Director Marvin?
Aye.
Director Nathan?
Aye.
Director Workman?
Aye.
And Director Amundson?
Aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Munoz?
Yes, we have some retirements today. Uh, first one is Richard Armstrong, elementary para at Pinewood Elementary. Been with the district seven years. Betsy Fisk, Fiskall, special ed para at Gage Elementary, been with the district thirty-one years. And Jeanette Hawkinson, special ed para professional at Longfellow Elementary, been with the district six years. Mary Shabastari, elementary para at Bishop Elementary, been with the district seven years, and Ruth Lockhart, custodian two. Uh, John Marshall has been with the district sixteen years. We thank these individuals for their service to our district and wish them well on their uh, next endeavor.
And there's always something waiting after retirement. Thank you, Mr. Munoz. Five point oh one, articulation cycle update. This is a briefing on the approval of Amplify Science for Sixth Grade Earth Science. Mr. Munoz?
Yes, at this time, I'll turn it over to Brenda Witchman, Executive Director of Curriculum Instruction, and she can introduce the other individuals that will be presenting with her. Brenda?
Good evening, Chair Marvin, school board members, and Superintendent Munoz. Tonight, we are here to report on our curriculum articulation work in science. Our core academic subjects are generally up for review and research every seven years, and this year we were tasked with studying science. Our presenters tonight are going to tell you more about the process, but I'm going to give you just a bit of background information before they get started. The twenty nineteen Minnesota Academic Standards in Science set the expectations for achievement in science for K- Twelve students in Minnesota. The standards are grounded in the belief that all students can and should be scientifically literate. Scientific literacy enables people to use scientific principles and processes to make personal decisions and to participate in discussions of scientific issues that affect society. Our graduates should be prepared for career and college opportunities. The standards describe a connected body of science and engineering knowledge that's acquired through active participation in science experiences. These experiences include hands-on laboratory activities that are rooted in science and engineering practices. The standards are based on current science education, which emphasize the inclusion of three dimensions, scientific and engineering practices, cross-cutting concepts, and disciplinary core ideas. This year, most of our work was focused on secondary science, but we have formed a team, um, consisting of curriculum and instruction, uh, principals and teachers to represent the elementary side, and some of those leadership team members were writing new lessons this summer, and will be piloting them next year. So our work, actually, K- Twelve will continue into next year. We have a stellar team with us here today to share about science articulation in RPS. They're going to share about our science journey this year, and then provide the rationale for that briefing item of the purchase of materials for sixth grade. So from the secondary CNI team, Heather Willman and Jen Conan, Fredell Science Teacher, Janay Manette, and Lincoln Science Teacher, Kyle Casper. Are you guys seeing our slides?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. I'm gonna turn it over to Kyle first, and he's gonna give us a little bit of the overview.
So this is our implementation plan, and that starts with the sixth grade, implement the new standards next school year. And of course, starting with sixth grade, this is a big change for a lot of teachers, because historically, this was a physical science year, uh, but with the new standards, it'll be switched to earth science. And so that starts next year. Uh, the following year will be the seventh grade new standards, and that continues as life science. Also new that year will be the environmental science at ninth grade, which will cover the earth and space science standards. And last, the twenty twenty-three school year, the eighth grade will start with their physical science, and the other high school classes will implement their new standards.
Right, Janay's gonna talk about the overall goals that we look at when reviewing curriculum.
All right, good evening. Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Oh, good. So yes, um, our overall goals, as we started looking at different curriculums, were to um, look at the diversity and the multiple perspectives of team members. We value student voice and the experience, the teacher voice and opportunity to learn, not just shopping for new materials, and ensuring that materials are provided in their, eh, in an equitable pathway of strong instruction for all of our learners.
Right, so I'll talk you through the, the review process. I want to first say that we have been super lucky. Many districts have had to stop the curriculum work this year, um, because the year has been so challenging, and we had teachers who stepped up and um, Janay and Kyle and Jen can testify, um, every month, we met for an hour and a half to continue to work on our standards implementation. Um, we're just, we're lucky we have teachers that were, were willing to put that time in this year. So first, we form a team, and we set a vision for what strong instruction looks like. So we started really with what do we want instruction to look like for every student in every classroom. Then the second step was to review the standards, and we, we do something where we call it unpacking the standards, where we look at what do the students need to know and be able to do with those standards? Sometimes standards are written in challenging language, and so we really look at what is it that we really want the students to know and be able to do, and, and how do we make that actionable? And then, um, our third step was to develop a tool to help us review the materials. So as a team, we really thought about our vision and what we wanted for instruction for all learners. And then, um, we compared some other tools. We looked at one from the University of Wisconsin, and then we created our own rubric based on what we thought were the most important pieces. Um, two important parts of that were gathering student feedback and also community input. As Kathy talked about, we have a Community Curriculum Advisory Council that meets monthly, and so we had community members, um, parents and students part of this work. And then we reviewed the materials. Um, we made a selection based on that rubric, and then, um, we'll build a training and a professional development plan, because we know that getting high-quality materials is just one part of the equation. And Jen's gonna talk about our uh, team members.
When we started this process originally, we had just sixth and eighth grade teachers part of it, as well as some instructional coaches. And then we expanded it to include all middle school teachers were invited to be a part of it. And then we asked our Equity Coordinator and American Indian Liaison to give their perspectives as well. So as you can see from this list, we have representation from all of the middle schools and a couple of coaches from those middle schools as well. And as Heather talked about, we came up with a rubric, and some of the important um, things that this group was looking for was that it was interesting and relevant, and had an anchor, anchoring phenomena for students that was kind of, let the students come up with the questions and where the science would lead. Tools to encourage diverse points of view and representation in science, multiple ways to assess understanding, focus on thinking and sense-making, connections to our community, and support from student dialogue and communication.
So our recommendation after this year-long process was to go with um, a resource called Amplify. And the things that we really appreciated about this resource, it has a strong correlation with the new standards. In fact, it was the only um, resource that we reviewed that, that um, that correlated with the new standards well enough um, to get high marks. Um, it's engaging and it's hands-on. Um, it has strong literacy components, and that includes informational texts, and then students also have an interactive notebook that they keep. And so those pieces um, are woven throughout all the lessons. Um, one thing we really liked was that students get a chance to do, talk, read, write, and visualize in every lesson. So as we think about culturally relevant teaching practices, we thought that was really important. And then another piece that um, that was exciting for us was the fact that scientists and engineers from a variety of ethnic and cultural backgrounds are highlighted in each unit. Um, so students really get that, that perspective. And then finally, um, it was ranked highest based on Ed Reports, but, which is a nonprofit that um, uses reviewers to look at um, curricular materials. So that also helped influence our decision. We did have a couple of areas for growth and development. Um, there are a few areas that we want to continue to work on as we use the resource, because we know there's no perfect resource that we can buy. Um, so prompting students to ask their own questions is something that we'll continue to work on. Um, and then just leveraging the social and cultural backgrounds of our students. We want to make sure that um, there are opportunities to um, gauge their prior knowledge and what they're interested in, um, and really connect them with their community. Um, and then again, that local phenomenon to anchor learning. So as we get training on these materials, we'll continue to work on um, adding our own local element, because we know that's really important for our learners. That is what we have to share with you. We are happy to take some questions if you have any.
Ms. Nathan?
Um, Heather, can you talk, the, one of the things that was really impressive to us on CCIAC is when we saw some of the videos of the curriculum in action, and Heather, can you describe, and I've forgotten what they're called, the examples that they were all, the kids were looking at the same example, and it was a video that described, and then they were reacting to it. Can you describe a little bit about how that is in the curriculum, that it's not just, you know, flat boards on paper, but it's some of those other resources?
Absolutely. Yeah, each um, each unit starts with some kind of an anchoring phenomena. So sometimes it'll be a video. Sometimes it will be a picture, um, and sometimes it's a simulation where the students are able to watch it. Um, and one of the things that, that is really important about this curriculum is that it's very much geared toward the students driving their own learning. And so, um, you would more likely see students um, doing different things in the classroom, not everyone doing the same thing at the same time. And then students generating those questions from whatever it is that they observed. So if it was a video, um, if it's a picture, or if it's a simulation, they're generating those questions um, and driving that next step in that inquiry process.
Any other questions, board members? Two things. I was just really impressed with the great group of people you had involved in this. I think the, getting diverse perspectives from people who teach different things, who are involved in different areas of, of education is so important, and so I, I really applaud that. My question for you is, is this something that would be useful to have approved sooner rather than later?
Yes, it would. That would be great. We're hoping to do some training this summer. Um, and then we'll also have some curriculum writing that will go along with the training. And then, um, we do want to have sort of a parent open house as well. Um, so if it is approved, we want to make sure we make some plans for that for the fall.
Uh, Chair Marvin, move approval. I mean, move to action.
Second, Garcia.
Been moved and seconded at, to have this become an action item. Ms. Iverson, would you call the roll?
Thank you. Director Marvin?
Aye.
Director Nathan?
Aye.
Director Workman?
Aye.
Director Amundson?
Aye.
Director Barlow?
Aye.
Director Garcia?
Aye.
Director McLaughlin?
Aye.
Thank you.
This is now an action item. Be it resolved, the School Board of Independence School District five thirty-five does hereby approve the purchase of Amplify Science for Sixth Grade Earth Science.
Move approval, Workman?
Second, Amundson.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Ms. Iverson, roll call.
Thank you. Director Workman? Oh, I'm sorry, Director Nathan?
Aye.
Director Workman?
Aye.
Director Amundson?
Aye.
Director Barlow?
Aye.
Director Garcia?
Aye.
Director McLaughlin?
Aye.
And Director Marvin?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Thank you. Five point oh two, literacy partnership update. Uh, this is a briefing item about approval of decodable readers. Mr. Munoz?
Yes, I'll turn it over to Brenda Witchman, Executive Director of Curriculum Instruction. Brenda?
Well, good evening again, Chair Marvin, school board members, and Superintendent Munoz, and we are happy to be here tonight to talk to you about that purchase and the much anticipated literacy partnership. But it wouldn't be right to start this presentation without acknowledging the hard work that all of our teachers um, have done this year who have participated. When we first started planning for an intensive learning experience that would span an entire school year and involve all of our kindergarten and all of our first-grade classroom teachers and support teachers, we weren't thinking we would be doing that in the middle of a pandemic. To say that we've had to pivot and adjust our plans a few times is an understatement.
To say that we've had to pivot and adjust our plans a few times is an understatement. This absolutely could not have happened without the strong and steady leadership of our two literacy coaches, Lori Back and Rebecca Metcalfsky, who were led by Peter Dodds. With all of the challenges we faced this year, it would have been easy to maybe just push this off a year. And there were times when we considered doing that. But we believe in our students and our teachers and our leaders. So we pushed through, but it was not easy. And even though we didn't get as far as we had initially planned, we have come a long way. Tonight, we have the following RPS team members to share about our literacy partnership adventure. Peter Dodds from Elementary CNI, those two awesome reading coaches, Lori and Rebecca, and two kindergarten teachers, Danielle Knoll and Randy Wood from Sunset Terrace. So they're going to share a little bit about our journey in the literacy partnership and then talk about the rationale for the purchase of the decodable readers.
Thank you. Good evening, board. Thank you for having us this evening. I appreciate the time to come and present. So just to review a little bit, there was a commitment, I would say, in January or February of last year of this idea of the literacy partnership and, and, and making sure all of our teachers get this foundational training in the science of reading. So there was a commitment to that and we did the work this year and we wanted to update you on kind of where we're at this evening and what our next steps are. So what is the literacy partnership? It's a year-long collaboration with our K-1 teachers in diving into the science of reading and really looking at structured literacy. And who was all involved? All of our kindergarten and first grade teachers, along with the majority, many of our special education teachers at the elementary as well. And why? Why were we doing this work? Well, I think first and foremost, quality reading instruction, we believe is an equity issue. And we want to make sure all of our students have access to high-quality materials and high-quality instructional practices. And then you'll also find that the science of reading, this term, this phrase, is actually deeply embedded into the new state standards that will be coming out in ELA and that we'll be looking at more closely in the coming years. And also our data illustrates that we have room to grow in this area. And then how? How did, how did the literacy partnership happen this year? Well, there was about six or seven meetings spread out throughout the course of the calendar year. And our coaches did professional development training along with coaching support in the buildings virtually. And, and we also, there was a heavy investment in making sure we got the right materials into our teachers' hands as well. So that's kind of an overview of the partnership. But it is important to note, I think, that when we look at our data, and this is our MCA reading data, we know we're kind of static and we know there's room for growth. So that's another key piece of the puzzle here today. So now Rebecca is going to step, step in and kind of give you a little bit more of the background on the, the why of this and what is that science of reading. Rebecca?
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having us. When we talk about the science of reading, we really are talking about these five pillars of literacy. These were established in the year 2000 by the National Reading Panel. And what's happened in the two decades since is just more and more research and evidence that shows that yes, these are the five critical pieces in regards to literacy. And those are phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency, vocabulary and comprehension. And it's not just enough that we say that there's five of them. It's important to know that these five pillars have to all be strong. All of our pillars need to be strong and all of our instruction needs to be strong in these areas because this is what happens when we don't have strong instruction in one of the pillars. We get a poor foundation. And skilled readers are proficient in all five, really proficient. And one of the key things that's come up in the last two decades with the research is that when we look at readers who were finding in upper grades, any grade beyond second grade, so third grade and above, all the way through 12th grade. If they're struggling in regards to comprehension and understanding what they read, the majority of the time, it can be traced back to gaps in their phonemic awareness instruction and in their phonics instruction, but especially down to that phonemic awareness and that sound level. So what we think really encapsulates how important it is, is this quote. And that is that if a child memorizes 10 words, they're going to read those 10 words. That's all they're going to get. But if a child learns the sounds of 10 letters, they can read 353 sound words, 4,324 sound words and 21,655 sound words. You can see here in this quote, the illustration of how important that ba, that pillar is in regards to literacy.
Well, board, thank you so much for having us here tonight. So I want to talk a little bit about the intended impact of the literacy partnership. And of course, the first one and foremost was really to increase student literacy success. We want them to feel good. We want them to understand and be proficient readers. So that's our number one outcome. Number two is really to support teachers and provide tools so that they can make really critical instructional decisions for each and every student. And we want to support teachers with common tools and common knowledge about phonemic awareness and phonics instruction. Those are two areas that we really needed to streamline just a little bit. And then finally, as a district, we really wanted to see growth in our reading scores. We've been stagnant for quite a while. And so we really want to see those scores start to increase. And we also wanted to look at areas that could perhaps use some growth, but also to really celebrate and acknowledge our areas of strength within the district. So how will we know if we're meeting our outcomes? Quantitatively, we do have some evidence that we can collect. The kindergarten students will be taking a phonemic awareness assessment. They've been doing that now for a year and have found some great growth between the beginning of the year and the end of the year. First grade will be implementing a new phonics assessment that is given one-on-one by the teacher. So the teacher will hear them read. They will do that at the beginning of the year and the end of the year to turn that in so we can have that comparative data. But they'll also be using these two assessments formatively throughout the year to really make instructional decisions. Second through fifth grade will be working with FastBridge A-reading data. And of course, our third through fifth grade students will have MCA data that we can look back on. I think, you know, the, the data is really exciting and I get kind of jazzed by looking at data. But even more important is the qualitative data that we're seeing. Rebecca and I just had exit coaching conversations with every one of our elementary schools. And we talked to the teachers for kindergarten and first grade. And they really talked about student engagement and just how excited their kids are this year with some of the new learning that they're implementing and with our new phonics program. They're seeing it bleed across to different content areas and they're finding that quite exciting. We hope to start looking at some look forwards, we call them, for walkthroughs on the five pillars of reading and structured literacy. So that we can just have some really engaging discussions about, you know, the instruction that we're doing while we're working with our students. And then finally, we've just been really excited about teacher feedback. By and large, it has been so positive. They were excited at the end of the year. And we told them that next year as coaches, we'll be visiting with them again. And they were very relieved and happy to hear that and excited to move forward with further implementation of what they learned this year about the science of reading. Peter, you are muted.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Can you still see my screen? Great. So one of the things that we wanted to make sure the board understood this evening is what does this look like in the classroom, right? It's one thing to talk about it. It's another thing to see what it looks like in the classroom. So on the right there, you see this tool that was introduced, Teachers Sound Wall. And this is, one of our teachers shared this resource. But then you can see students in the middle, what they're doing is breaking apart words and finger spelling them. And then on the left-hand side, you can see I have two video clips here of, of two of our teachers, Danielle Knoll and Randy Wood, who are here this evening. And they're going to give, share their perspective here in a minute. But working with breaking apart words and understanding how to manipulate words, which is a high-level thinking skill when it comes to phonics instruction. Here are some other voices that we wanted to make sure that you could read and take a look at. And these are from our teachers, from the people in our system serving students. And what they valued about the literacy partnership this year, about the knowledge that they gained and also the tools that they used. So you can see as a kindergarten teacher, our students are being able to sound out words better than they have before. From this reading teacher, talking about blending and segmenting our students that struggled with reading, this year they've seen an enormous difference. And this is in a year of a pandemic on top of that. Here we have two special education teachers sharing their experience. Really talking about this partnership between gen ed and special education and how it helps them, being part of the partnership, understand what's happening in the general education classroom and how they can differentiate for student needs. And then finally, one other elementary teacher, this quote I think is, is really important because this teacher was saying that the tools and the learning this year help them make a better plan to move forward when a student showed a need. And that's really the main purpose of the literacy partnership and the great work that Rebecca and Lori have done this year is, is helping teachers add to their toolbox to support kids in their reading development. That's what it's all about. And then finally, Danielle, Knoll and Randy Wood are here this evening. And I wanted to open it up to them to share a little bit about their learning this year and how they feel like it is impacting their students.
Hi, I'm Randy Wood and this is Danielle Knoll. And we are kindergarten teachers at Sunset Terrace. I'm going to talk a little bit about how it's impacted my teaching. As you saw with the pillars graphic, phonemic awareness and phonics is a huge part of what our kids need for reading foundational skills. And this has helped streamline our teaching. We've all been kind of doing phonics, you know, for the past however many years, but in our own way. And this helps even the playing field across the district, across schools. So that if a child moves from one school to the next, they might be off by a week or two in curriculum. But it's the same language. It's the same skills that they've been practicing, the same way that they've been practicing it wherever they came from. So that's been really great to help us out with our teaching. And then also being able to collaborate together through the literacy partnership has been really awesome too. It was a really good rollout, I think, even in the year of a pandemic, even though we couldn't be in person doing the learning. We were able to get on through Google meets and then collaborate with our team and also teams from other schools too, to do that learning together. And we've just been really excited with what we've seen with our students as we're doing the lessons, the things that they're picking up on. I mean, each day they say things that shock me and they're starting to talk about patterns in words. As we're finger stretching words, they're asking questions like, but if that follows a CVC pattern, why does it make the long sound? And they're just asking so many deeper questions about words that we haven't even really covered before. And so they're really taking everything that we're giving to them and applying it. And it's been so fun to see how much they've grown with that. We started the year really heavy with rhyming and that rhyming has kind of come full circle. So now they're finding words and they're like, oh, if I can read the word "we", then I know this is "me" and this is "she", and they're adding all of these different pieces to words and can read so many more words than when we just focused on like our sight words or things like that. So it's been super awesome to see that. And I think one of my favorite things that one of my kids told me, she came to me middle of the year or so and she said, just the other day, she said, at my old school, they didn't teach us that words were made of sounds. And so I didn't, I couldn't read until I came here. And you taught me that all of these words are just made of sounds. And if I know my sounds, then I can read pretty much any word. And so it was just so awesome to see her like acknowledge like, I'm a reader and I can read because I know these sounds. And so it's just been really exciting to see them take it all in and starting to apply all that we've been able to talk about.
Thank you so much, Danielle and Randy, for sharing your experience. I did want to, and I'm going to try and share my video one more time here. There was one more video I wanted to share with the board, if it's okay. Just a quick 22nd clip. We had two teachers at, one of our sites at Washington. And this is Joni Erickson and Angela Lash. And they made this great video. They wanted to share their learning this year. But I'm just going to show you a, a short, excuse me, a short part from it because I think it really illustrates the work that's happened this year. So bear with me as I share my screen here. Thank you so much.
Well, even though through this hybrid DL and full in-person year, we would say that we have the most confidence in our kindergarteners' reading than we've ever actually had. Nearly 100% of our students are able to identify letter sounds and letters. They are consistently segmenting and blending CVC, which is consonant, vowel, consonant, words, and words with digraphs like CH, SH, TH, WH and CK, along with blends at a high level of accuracy using finger stretching.
So I, I would like to play the rest, but it's a little bit longer. I do want to say to the board though, they, at the end, they did thank the board for the many hours of work you all put in this year because they know it's been a difficult year. And if you'd like to see that whole clip, I'd be happy to share it with you. Just go ahead and email me and I can, I can share that with you. So, I just want to make sure that I recognize all the people that contributed to those pictures and the video. And they were all really instrumental in helping us pull all this together for you tonight. So talking about next steps, next steps going forward. And one of the reasons that we're here tonight is thinking about, okay, we've laid a strong foundation. Now we need to continue the work going forward. So next year, we are going to continue the literacy partnership. We're going to move it to our second grade teachers. We're also going to include our English learner teachers and our reading specialists in the learning next year as well. We're going to really focus on data collection because we really want to show the growth that's happening and not just have us tell you about it. And then the, the key piece here is really looking at putting a new tool into our teachers' hands, which are decodable texts. That's critical for the students to practice the work that they've been doing that Danielle and Randy and all of our K-1 teachers have done this year. So why decodable readers? And that's where we're looking at this tool called Godes. Godes is a, will help our students apply their phonics instruction into actual reading. And this is critical. One of the critical reasons it is, is because our new state standards are specifically calling out these decodable texts. And we know this is a tool that our teachers need to have in front of them. Lori?
Yeah. And so Rebecca mentioned the last 20 years, almost, or a little over, since the National Reading Panel convened. But even earlier than that, if we look back 40 years, we see that the research has been there. It's just taken a long time for us to bring it forward. And if we look back at this seminal work, it's still addressed today by current researchers when they look at becoming a nation of readers. And so when we look at it decodable, the criteria that they set forward was that books needed to be comprehensible. The vocabulary needs to be understandable. Sometimes the decodable text can be so contrived that it doesn't make sense and it doesn't sound like the way kids talk or the way they listen to adults talk. And so we need it to be understandable and written in sentence patterns that make sense to kids. They sound familiar. It also needs to be instructive. So the words need to be decodable. It needs to align with the curriculum that they're being taught so that the spoken sequence of letter sounds and vowel sounds are introduced at about the same time as the books are presented to them so that they can practice their phonics skills right away. And then finally, they need to be engaging. We need to be able to read them over and over and over again. Kids love to do it. And by the way, their caregivers will really appreciate it too. If they're an engaging, beautiful book with wonderful, rich illustrations and pictures and stories.
So at this point, we would open it up to any questions from the board?
Director Barlow.
Director Barlow, are you there?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Before I comment regarding G-O-D-S, I really appreciate the presentation. The information regarding the five pillars was so important, and as you laid it out, if there's one area that is weak, then it weakens the entire process. I also liked the awareness that reading is more than teaching, but there's actually a science associated with reading, and this definitely incorporates that. First question deals with support of the home. You know, how can we get parents on board, if you will? Is that, is this question beyond anything you've considered or discussed? I think of the cradle-to-career presentation we had a couple of weeks ago, where they spoke up having or developing cards that they would be sending and making available to households to where parents could be more involved in that process. And since where a year was spent regarding kindergartners and first grade, and, you know, I think that's just a wonderful opportunity to engage, involve parents, because I think so many parents want to help their children and help staff, okay? And so just a thought, but more specifically to G-O-D-S now. I did do some research, and I was pleased to see that while there are a number of decodable readers out there, I'm glad that you landed on with this particular product. If I could just share a few notations I made, it, this particular product unites phonics with the compelling content and beautiful art. I found that interesting, because it's more than just, you know, words, but it's additional elements as well. And that it encourages the students to wonder, to decode and to know versus simply read what's before you, okay? And that it also establishes this premise that every child is capable of not just reading, but greatness. And that's, you know, and I'm sure, I don't have to tell you guys, as, you know, coaches and/or teachers or staff, you know, reading opens up so much opportunity. And then finally, I like the fact that this particular curriculum is rich with facts and ideas that spark students' curiosity about the world around them. And so I'm excited. I hope my colleagues will see the benefit value and that we will be able to fully support you in bringing this recommendation before us.
Thank you. Director Garcia.
Yes, thank you, Chair Marvin. And I also appreciate the presentation that you brought before us. I think it's, I think it will certainly fit well within the district. I do have one question, and it might actually be answered by your literacy partnership that you intend to do with your English language teachers. But what I was wondering is, for those students who are bi or multilingual, is there care in this process, I guess, that we, you would be undertaking to address how we don't just push those students through into like a monolingual-only literacy-based education, that we would also be supporting them in maintaining other languages they speak in addition to, you know, learning to read and write in English?
Thank you, Dr. Garcia. I appreciate the question. We did just meet with our EL implementation associate and the supervisor of the EL teachers in planning for next year. And really, what we want to do is involve them in the process of planning, because we know our EL students' needs might be a little bit different. So we're planning together and reviewing, okay, this is what we got coming, but what does this look like from an EL perspective? And I will say, our implementation associate in EL spoke exactly to your question, like, let's just make sure that we are working with oral language, and we want students to feel valued in their home language. And he really made that point very clear, which I appreciated. So we're working in close partnership with our EL team to figure out, yes, but what does this look like from an EL lens as opposed to maybe our second-grade general education teacher?
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Director McLaughlin.
I simply want to thank you for the great work that you're doing here. I can't wait to see the results of this. It's really exciting. Also wanted to give the perspective that my new reader is now about 10 years past that stage, but I remember this, you know, we wanting to practice, we want to practice, the parents want to do things, but also kind of holding your breath to see if they could do it or not. This seems so much better than that experience, so I'm hoping that parents and teachers see that. Also wanted to comment, this is the second conversation we've had tonight that focuses on equity for students, and I really appreciate that. I do have a couple of questions, though, really technical things, but I'm hoping that it will expand the discussion. Ms. Mack, you talked about something in your presentation, I'm just going to read it here, the look fours during building walkthroughs on the five pillars of reading. Can you explain that for us? And then I do have one more question.
Oh, sure. So thank you for the question. We've created a document, it's a working document right now, and it's in draft. But what we'd like to do is be able to go out and say, and not necessarily us, for sure, it could be the principals in the school, or the instructional coaches in the school, teachers could use it with each other to go in and do some checking and see, like, how does she present this? How does he share this information? But is it true to the five pillars of literacy instruction? And so basically what it is, it's kind of like a rubric, and it shows what it would look like if it's fully implemented. So there's some verbiage to go along with it, which describes what you might see if it is in place, that particular piece or that particular pillar is in place. And then what it might be if it isn't in place yet, there's still a little bit of room for growth. And so it isn't an evaluation tool. We would never want to evaluate one another. It is a tool to get us talking. So if two teachers use this tool, they might observe each other and then go back and say, hmm, I wonder what they mean by this, or I wonder how I could incorporate this. And then that would be a time for them to work together, contact and work with their instructional coach, and for sure, work with Rebecca and I if we could share some ideas with them.
And then just if one of you could speak for a minute or so, I was just so curious about the topics, I think I got them right, the finger spelling or the finger stretching, what that means.
Sure, I'll take that one. Yep, I'll take that one. Finger stretching is an activity that they've learned through our newest resource that they got this year with really great reading. And it has to do with using your fingers to indicate the sounds in a word. So if you ask a child, how many phonemes do you hear in the word "cat"? When they finger stretch it, they go [k], [a], [t], cat. Three, three phonemes. So that's, it's really identifying and stretching it apart. And as you go up in the grades, they start, they go from can you hear the phonemes to how many syllables does this word have? So it's not, you know, it's not just for our earliest learners, but it really is something that you can see as we progress up through the grades as well.
I also invite, if you don't mind, either Randy or Danielle to share their experience with finger stretching, if they'd like.
Yeah, so Rebecca, you modeled it very well. And so, and we even start then talking about, okay, when you, when you stretch that out, it was three phonemes, what did you hear in the middle? Or what did you hear at the end or the beginning? And really get them thinking about those patterns in words. And like I mentioned before, so we're stretching it out, and then we talk about like long vowels or short vowels, and they're really starting to pick up on those patterns in words and why it's a long vowel or why it's a short vowel as they're stretching them and just having those conversations about words.
Thank you. Director Nathan.
So it's a nice, it's a night of thank yous, but I'm going to add mine, because I remember when there was a lot of talk in the media about this science of reading, and there were the NPR stories and articles, and I know the board got a number of emails at the time asking us what we were doing. And the beauty of it is that our curriculum instruction team was on it and was already planning to do this work. So I appreciate the forethought and the, and the being ahead of the curve that you all have been this past year. One question I have about the assessments or sort of knowing how the students are doing is, how would parents know throughout the year how their students are progressing with the skills? How are they, do they get reports at conferences? Are there like formative assessments that they can track through the year as opposed to like the beginning of the year and the end of the year assessments?
That's a great question. I can speak to it a little bit, and then I would encourage anybody else to jump in. But the report card at the elementary level went through a drafting process this year in terms of realigning the report card, and there's been a lot of work involved in that process. But one of the key pieces is aligning that report card that our parents are getting and the information that our stakeholders are getting is aligned to the science of reading and the practices that, and the learning that were happening this year. So this summer, that summer curriculum writing team, that's part of their work, is looking at that and how does it align to the report card so we can better communicate as opposed to one benchmark here and one benchmark there?
Any other questions, board members? Ms. Switchman, as board members have been pointing out, this is really an exciting initiative and amazing curriculum. I'm guessing that you would just as soon have yes, is what you're saying? Is that moving this to action would be a great idea?
Yes. I'll move it to action, Workman.
Second, second, Nathan.
It's been moved and seconded to action. Ms. Severson, would you call the roll, please?
And Director Marvin, we're going to start with you again, please.
Yes, aye.
Director Nathan.
Aye.
Director Workman.
Aye.
Director Amundson.
Aye.
Director Barlow.
Aye.
Director Garcia.
Aye.
And Director McLaughlin.
Aye.
Thank you.
This is an action item. Be it resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve the purchase of G-O-D-S decodable readers for $234,669.45.
Director Paul Amundson. Second, Workman.
It's been moved and seconded. Ms. Severson.
Thank you. Director Nathan.
Aye.
Director Workman.
Aye.
Director Amundson.
Aye.
Director Barlow.
Aye.
Director Garcia.
Aye.
Director McLaughlin.
Aye.
And Director Marvin.
Aye.
Thank you.
And the motion passes. Thank all of you very much. We are now at 7.01 approval of boundary adjustments for the 2022-2023 school year as recommended by the Boundary Advisory Committee. This is an action item. The board has received many briefings on the process and the findings of this committee. So I'm going to read the action item. After it is moved and seconded, there will be time for discussion. Be it resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve the boundary change maps to be implemented beginning with the 2022-2023 school year.
Second, McLaughlin.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. And now for discussion. Mr. Munoz, did you have something you wanted to say first?
Nope, nothing to add.
All right. Board members.
Well, I guess.
Ms., well, we'll go with Director Amundson first and then Ms. Nathan.
Okay. Director Nathan can go first.
I was just going to build on Superintendent Munoz's comments was, if you say that there's nothing to add, then there's been no changes or no adjustments to the recommendations as was presented at the last meeting.
Correct.
Ms. Amundson.
Thank you. I just wanted to acknowledge the individuals, boundary adjustments are always difficult. It's, it's the type of thing where you try to do what's best for the entire district, and there are certain individual families that will be affected in a way that's an adjustment for the family. And some, some negative, there's no such thing as a perfect plan. So I wanted to recognize that the emails that we've gotten from families who are in their perception adversely affected by these boundary changes, that we are not ignoring the inconvenience or discomfort or whatever the boundary changes are doing for those individual families, that we recognize that there will be difficulties for them, but that it's for the good of the district as a whole for balancing the demographics of schools and that type of thing. So I know that there have been some emails that have come in, and I don't want those families to feel like they're being ignored, but there's just so many individual cases that it's impossible to address them all. But I just wanted to make sure those families know that they have been heard, and we've done the best we can.
Yeah, and I'd also like to add in my, how to say, over 40 years, I'll give the exact number, over 40 years in public education, my experience has been as a teacher, a school counselor, administrator. Students are pretty good at recovering from a switch to schools. They make friends really well. I do know that as a parent, that's a concern from some, but I will tell you that the schools will do everything they can to make a new, smooth transition for new students coming into their school. So they're really good at making sure that it is a good transition. This is not the first time we've done boundaries changes here in the district, but, you know, anytime you bring on basically four new schools, you have to adjust boundaries to balance out your capacity. So I do know, I'll share, parents, that our schools will do everything they can to welcome that new student and making sure that it's a really positive experience for them.
Thank you, Superintendent. Director Nathan.
For the, for the viewing audience who may not have read the entire background information that's in the agenda item, there are some statements about work that is going to continue regarding grandfathering or exceptions to attendance. So Superintendent Munoz, how do you anticipate communicating those decisions once they're made to the community?
Well, we, we just, we'll begin that work here in the month of June, and we will bring that back to the board as an information item, but I anticipate there'll be some type of deadline for making requests. And we're not using the term grandfathering in, that has a negative meaning for some. It would be administrative placement or an exception to attendance. And board policy states what the four criteria are for exception to attendance, so we will continue to follow that process. But for a situation that wouldn't fall under one of those categories, it would have to be an administrative placement. And like I said, we will bring, once that gets finalized, we will bring that plan with some timelines back to the board.
Ms. Amundson.
Just, so there's, there's the issue of a student who would want to finish their last year at a building. Are you saying, just, just for the benefit of the public, are you saying that it will be a case-by-case basis, not an entire grade level that will be allowed to stay?
I can tell you, our, the plan isn't finalized, and we just started working on it, but the But the past practice has been, we've done everything we can to let allow a student to finish their last year at that school if there's space. With bringing on four new schools or three at the elementary level, most likely space shouldn't be an issue if it's not too many students. The reason why we'd have to have a deadline and when they would have to let us know is as we start working on the budget process for that next year and start looking at staffing, you know, how many kindergarten teachers does this building need and so on? We would have to have a deadline on when they would make that request to for that administrative placement. But our past practice has been to let them, you know, if they have one year left in that school, to try to accommodate that. So I anticipate that will will probably be part of the process.
But my question specifically, I'm sorry I wasn't clear, was it won't be a blanket application to an entire grade level at an entire school. It would be a case by case because in the past, in the past, there have been those blanket grandfathering. I'm sorry, that's not a good term. I don't have a better one. But an entire grade level allowed to stay? That won't probably be happening under what you're proposing, just to be clear for the public. It would have to be an individual exception and there would have to be action on the part of the family to request that.
Correct.
There won't be what we've done in the past where we let the entire across the city or entire across one school fifth graders stay.
I'm not sure how that would work. But so, no, it would have to be a case by case request by parents.
Really clear about that so that people know that action would need to be taken if they feel strongly.
Yeah, and we would communicate that once the process is established.
You bet. Thanks.
Yep.
Are there any other questions or comments, board members? All right, let me just say that understanding that this is going to cause change for many families, for many students. But as Superintendent said, our teachers and our administrators are keenly aware that change can be disruptive, it can be unsettling, it can also be really exciting. And that our students and their families will have a year before any changes take place to adjust to that. And I'm the only person, I think, in this screen right now who's been in education even longer than the superintendent has been. My experience has been that kids look to the adults around them. And if we feel optimistic that things are going to work out all right, students believe that and they do work out all right. So they're going to be looking at us, at the adults, to decide, is this going to be traumatic? Or is this going to be just a change and maybe disruptive, but also kind of exciting with new opportunities? So at this point, this is an action item. Resolution's been read, we've had the discussion. Ms. Severson, would you please call the roll?
Thank you. Director Workman?
Aye.
Director Amundson?
Aye.
Director Barlow?
Aye.
Director Garcia?
Aye.
Director McLaughlin?
Aye.
Director Marvin?
Aye.
And Director Nathan?
Aye.
Thank you.
The motion passes and I see that Director Amundson has a question.
Have a a comment. I just wanted to make sure that we express our appreciation again to all of the individuals who put a lot of time and effort and heart, frankly, into into the committee and also the staff members and our consultants who spent a lot of time. I think it was a good process. I don't, you know, I know there are people who are unhappy, but I think it's a very, very small number. And I think it's the best that we could possibly act being that boundary changes are always difficult and disruptive. But thank you to all those involved and the many, many, many hours that went into it.
Thank you, Director Amundson. That's really important, the committee and all those involved did a huge amount of work. Thank you. All right, moving on. Hang on for a second. Michelle, can you? Thank you. 7.02 approval of the 2021-2022 school district budget. This is a briefing item. Mr. Munoz?
Yes, before I turn it over to John, Executive Director of Finance, just a reminder for those who may be watching or watch this recording later, the board did have a study session on the next year's budget. So tonight, John is just going to give a brief summary of that meeting. So at this time, I'll turn it over to John. John?
All right, thank you, Chair Marvin. Superintendent Munoz, just going to share my screen here because I'm going to give just some of the highlights here of the budget and the five-year forecast for you. All right. So just a little background. School Board must approve a budget by July 1st. That's per statute or we do not have a legal authority to spend money starting July 1st. And the main school board policy we keep in our minds as we're helping guide the budget setting process is making sure that the unassigned fund balance will end at 6% or higher at the end of the projected budget period. Some of the basic revenue assumptions that we've put into our budget so far are we are assuming general. Education state aid is going to be $6,633 per pupil unit. State law is still at $6,567 as of today. We know that a special session of the legislature is forthcoming in June, we hope. And that should lead to an increase, but we don't have any guarantees on what the increase is. I will talk in the forecast that we've run another update assuming a higher number based on the likelihood that it may be bigger than what we have assumed so far. We do have a voter-approved referendum of $781 per pupil unit. We have local optional revenue, which is basically a local levy set by our school board at $724 per pupil unit. And we're budgeting based on 17,743 students. That's the number that we put in our enrollment projections back in February. We have budgeted $7.1 million of revenue from the CRRSA Act, but we have not budgeted $16 million from the ARP Act. And we know that we need to do some more work on that, both from a community engagement perspective and some more planning with this next superintendent. On our expenditure assumptions for next year, we know that teachers and principals need to negotiate a new contract. Everybody else has a settled contract or work agreement for next year. So salaries and benefits have already been determined. But our largest group, the teachers, we we need to get together with them. I believe there is a date scheduled in a couple of weeks to do that. And then for contracted services, supplies, capital budgets, we adjusted those to the four-year trend line this year for our district-wide budgets. And then the site supply budgets were based on a per-student allocation formula like we have done in the past. Enhancements within the budget next year, we have an additional American Indian liaison position. We have the new Executive Director of Diversity, Equity and Inclusion included. We have four middle school sport options at our middle schools. We have the new RPS online school and some of the staffing so far. We also have testing coordinators at the high schools to refocus our school counselor time to what they do best at counseling rather than worrying about testing coordination. And we are putting additional custodians into the budget to work on doing additional cleaning. We do have some reductions in our FTE, our full-time equivalent, numbers for next year. This is because when we were staffing as of March 18th, which is kind of the cutoff date of making all these decisions for the budget that we are proposing, we know that the number of enrolled students for fall 2021 is less than the number that we had assumed for fall of 2020 a year ago. So while we didn't make reductions in the fall when we had experienced lower numbers, we're now adjusting the budget and adjusting the staffing to fit within the number of students we're expecting. A lot of our staffing at our buildings is based on a ratio and it's based on section numbers. So we look at the exact number of students and we assign a full-time equivalent number of staff for the number of students that are enrolled. As far as I am aware, all but one teacher currently has a position matching what they are owed or what they are guaranteed for next year. So there might be one teacher that will possibly be underemployed for next year. But the the moral of the story is that all the people that are owed a job and want a job have a job minus one person. So there were no layoffs, there were no reductions in force by the district. They there have been retirements, there have been resignations. That created openings and then we were able to reduce our FTE numbers with those ratios. We do have 15 extras positions built into the budget so that if we do experience an uptick in enrollment over the summer, we don't need to come back and have you adjust the budget right away to hire. We can go up to 15 people and that's already worked into the numbers that we are presenting. And I just, again, want to reiterate that the cabinet and the superintendent did not go through and make any other intentional reductions to any positions. If there were any positions that somebody feels was cut at a building, that may have been a principal's choice to use funds differently where maybe they took the same amount of dollars, but instead of having this kind of position, they made that kind of position instead. I'm just going to go to the bottom line here on full-time equivalents. So when we proposed the budget last year, we had 2,627 full-time equivalents. This budget is proposing 2,612 full-time equivalents. That number includes the 15 extras that we are holding just in case we experience more growth over the summer. So overall, on the budget side, before I get into the forecast, the total district budget is proposed at $430 million and includes referendum construction. You're going to see in the forecast here in a minute that we updated the projection and we believe that we will end this school year with an unassigned balance in the range of 8.2% up to 14.4%. And you might be saying, why is there such a gap? We had our software kind of give us a projection based on what we've been spending to date this school year and assume it goes on the same trends for the last couple of months of the year. It's saying that we will underspend the budget that is school board approved, which would leave more in reserve than we budgeted. Same thing for next year. If we go budget and we assume that the budget was fully spent this year and we fully spend the budget next year, we'd have 8% in the unassigned fund balance. But if you acknowledge that maybe we're going to finish this year upwards of 14.4%, then it would look like we would end next year at 14% in the unassigned fund balance. So well within school board policy. I'm just going to jump into the five-year general fund forecast, going to just merge these items here together to make it a little simpler. We do the forecast twice a year. This is the spring forecast. And basically, we're the biggest changes here is we're updating budget adjustments through March 31st that we had the school board approve a few meetings back and the proposed budget for next school year. I've already covered a couple of these numbers, so I'll just concentrate on this one. We are assuming, again, I had said earlier 1%, but I'm going to give you a projection using 2% for the state aid growth. We had talked about this at the study session, that the maximum we could seek for a voter-approved referendum would be $1,827 per pupil unit. That compares to today's number of 781. We do need to have an election on that unless law changes and allows the school board to renew this themselves. But assuming that doesn't happen, there would need to be an election by the fall or so November of 2025 to renew that or to increase to a number between 781 and 1827. As far as budgeting for expenditures, I had mentioned before that with the teacher's contract being our largest group of employees and not having settled a contract yet, we assumed, and this is just an assumption, that salaries and benefits may go up 2.5% next year. We won't know that until we get to the end of negotiations and see what has actually been settled upon. We do have new teaching positions in the 22-23 year because of student growth. We are expecting to continue to be a growing school district after the anomaly of last fall. And we also have assumed new positions for opening up our new school buildings in 22-23. We talked about that last time. We're assuming 3% increases in other budget codes of contracted services, supplies and capital, acknowledging that some things like transportation might go up 3.5% per the contract. Other things might come in slightly less, but on average, it may be around 3%. This is just to look at the general fund revenues, expenditures and fund balance over the last five years. These are actual results just to kind of guide where I'm going next. So you can see we were on a trend of spending into the fund balance. If this chart were to go back a few more years, it would have shown the fund balance coming down. It bottomed out at 7.1% of the expenditures that year. And then the last three years, it went up, we've added to our reserves. And we continue to project that we will add this year as well. We project that in version two. In version one, we do not project that, we project that we will spend into that. But again, that's that's assuming budget and every line item were fully spent, which we are noticing is not the trend right now. This version one, this kind of would be the standard way of budgeting. It just assumes, again, the budget is fully spent last year, it's going to be fully spent next year. We would be okay, we'd meet school board policy at 8.2% this year, 8.0% the following year. But then we would start to be below school board policy, starting with the 22-23 school year. The major assumptions in version one of the forecast, or maybe the traditional way of forecasting is state increase of 1%, salaries of 2.5%. And I'm going to just pop ahead here to version two. So this is the one that takes into account now that the budget comes in a little bit better than planning, that we spend less than what is approved by the school board and we actually build our fund balance this year. And it would go up to 14.4%. So 35 million of 242 million is 14.4%. Then going forward and the revenue side, we've used a different inflation. We've used 2%, assuming that maybe the state legislature now has enough money to approve a 2% increase in in education funding. We've worked that in. And a school board member asked, what if we use 2.4% instead of 2.5% on the salaries and benefits increases? And we ran that in these numbers as well. I would say that really, it does save money, but it doesn't save a lot of money. It's not millions of dollars, it's more in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. So it'd be more like a point two or a point three, so like 200, 300,000 dollars by assuming 1/10 of 1% less than what we did in the first forecast. But you'd see in this version two, we'd probably be just fine next year, we'll probably be just fine even if we just let the budget go on autopilot again for the the next year there. It's now, the the problem comes into the third year out from right now is where we would probably have some sort of major reduction or some sort of major revenue increase or a combination of both to get us to where we need to be to comply with school board policy. I showed this chart, it's in our budget book, but we talked about that briefly last week. This is the version one, so the traditional way. 8.2% there in black is just showing where the fund balance would go if we fully spent the budget this year. Next year is be the 8%, so basically flat. And then the black line starts to dive below the orange line. And when that happens, then we know we're not complying with school board policy. If I do the version two, which, you know, made those two minor adjustments, well, three adjustments, I'd say. And we actually are at more than that 14% number. It gives us three more years where we can probably safely say we're going to finish above the orange line, possibly even a fourth year there, depending on how the ARP funding is budgeted and used. So it really seems like we're probably on track to not have a major crisis with, at least within the next couple of years. So I think that's the good news of of using an updated projection there that takes into account more of the reality of where we're at right now with what we're seeing in actual spending this year. My key points, forecasts again, are are made for five years into the future, a lot changes. You know, our state is only budgeting for this next two-year period. But I'm trying to project out what the state might do five years from now. And so there's a lot of uncertainty with that. So I would caution us on getting too worried about years four and five, for sure. Year three, we want to pay attention to, but for sure, we want to dial in on the next two years because that's where the funding discussion at the state level is at. The forecasts are usually negative because they assume the budget is on autopilot, kind of been using that term now. But it kind of just means that if we don't make any adjustments, we just keep all the same jobs we have, we keep paying all the same bills. we just keep all the same jobs we have, we keep paying all the same bills the same way. It would definitely show that the expenses are not going to, or excuse me, the revenues are not going to keep up with the expenses. We need to be making impactful decisions probably one to two years ahead of the red flags within the forecast. And so that can be things like lobbying legislators for more money, reducing our staffing or going to voters for more funding. Those are just three ideas off the top of my head. That's not an all-inclusive list of how we solve a lot of these problems. We've used again 1% for state aid in version one, 2% in version two for staff pay increases. We've assumed 2.5% in version one, 2.4% in version two. Just want to remind any of our employees that just because we have included these as an assumption, it's neither a guaranteed amount nor the parameter that the school board has tasked us with negotiating the contract at. And then right now, it's appearing that the 23-24 is our next red flag. So if we back that up a couple of years, we really want to start planning for that in this 2122 school year and talking about what would be our strategies to deal with that. Do we go for an operating referendum? We talk about a capital projects, technology referendum? Do we talk about staffing reductions, program reductions? And I think we need to continue to have those types of conversations and engagements around future budgets. That's where I'm going to leave off for this evening, so I'd be happy to answer any questions you have on the budget.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson. Director Amundson.
Thank you. Thank you for running the numbers to see what the difference would be in a 2.5 versus 2.4 assumption for contracts. I was the one who requested that and it's really good to know that that type of adjustment is not in the millions, which is what, what we need to be looking at. However, I would like to just put out there that, as I've said a bunch of other times, if we're only getting 1% to 2% from the legislature increase and we're settling contracts at 2.5 or even 2.4, that is unsustainable. It's just, the math will, won't line up. And I think that's something that somehow we need to address. I know we're just one small school district amongst, you know, hundreds in Minnesota who's dealing with the same issue because when we have compared, correct me if I'm wrong, but when we have compared how we're settling contracts in Rochester with other districts, we're, we're similar or below what other districts are giving for adjustments to their labor groups. Am I correct in that, Mr. Carlson?
I think that would be a generally correct statement, that we, that we are not overly high on our contract settlements.
We're, we're being, we're being reasonable, which, which means that all districts in Minnesota presumably are dealing with this difference in funding. So as a, as a district, I think we either need to deliberately make efforts to discuss with our legislators and/or look for additional efficiencies. I, I firmly believe that our staff is always mindful of our budget and, and trying to be as efficient with, with our funds that we can. But I, I would like to see before we get to the reduction phase, because I'm going to make an assumption that things aren't going to change a whole lot in terms of what we're getting from the legislate, legislature in the next couple of years. So before we get to the point where we have to form a budget reduction is, you know, we, we could try something new, especially this year with the pandemic. We have seen multiple innovations in the way that we deliver our educational practices. I think there might be people out there who have ideas about a new way to do things that could save money. So I guess I'm putting forward that I think that there should be a formal initiative starting now to solicit ideas and have the time to study them and be able to implement them before we hit that deadline of having to make reductions because it takes time to explore things. And the time to be looking at them isn't when we're making the reductions because then it's too late. So I guess I'm requesting that the administration look in some way of a formal program now to be looking for efficiencies or innovations that would save us money. So I guess, Mr. Carlson, I guess, I'm putting the ball in your court, is there a, or Superintendent Munoz, is there a, a way that we could formally start that type of process of examination?
Well, we'd have to discuss that. I would offer up a statement that you did, you said earlier. We, this is my 10th year in the district. I don't think we've ever got more than 2% from the state and there's years we've gotten less than 2%. But John just showed you where we've been at. We do that every year. We try to find ways to, to be more efficient and cut costs. And I would say, in the 10 years I've been here, we have not had major reductions, but look where our fund balance will be at the end of this year. So that's something that we do on a regular basis. Just for example, anytime we lose, lose a position for retirement or whatever, we don't immediately jump right to, let's fill it, let's talk about, do we need to fill that? So that, that's something that we do on a regular basis and I assume the, the new superintendent will continue to do that and always look for ways to, you know, because like you said, Melissa, we can't rely on the state to give us a lot more money, so we have to find a way to be, do more with less, I guess.
Director Nathan.
So I guess this is more of a comment before a question, but Mr. Carlson, you know that I really appreciate all the work that you and your, your team do and the cabinet does in, in bringing this budget together, but especially this year. I think you probably know the number better than I, but I know that there was a state survey that Mas, that the Minnesota Association of School Bor, Masbo, Minnesota Association of School Business Officials, got it? And other organizations put out to ask districts what the impact of these, of this COVID year was going to be on budgets. And the result that stuck with me was that 65% of districts were anticipating budget cuts if they got, even if they got a 1% increase in the formula funding. So there's 65, and this is more for the community to hear, there's 65% of districts in the state that are cutting their budgets this year and there are also a significant portion who have to go for referendums this year. We don't. And the reason we don't is because of the excellent financial management that our team has been doing, not just this year, but previous years. When I, when I saw these numbers, I have to tell you, I was thrilled because budget cuts are not what I got into being a school board member. I don't think any of us were. So I, I think this is something that the whole community really needs to appreciate the work that's gone into making this happen. We're not cutting staff, we're not cutting programs and we're really setting ourselves up to be in a good financial position. And I really do like the anticipation of, let's look one to two years out and see what we may need to do in those out years depending on how the financial forecast comes in. But the good news is that we don't have to do it today and I really appreciate that.
Thank you. Director McLaughlin and then Director Garcia.
Mr. Carlson, just a brief comment. I know that you've talked about this before and it takes on to Director Nathan's comment about COVID. But when you used, you were talking about the CRRS A and the ARP, those are federal pandemic funding. Did I understand that right from our earlier conversations?
Yes, those are from the federal government. Yep.
That's all I had. Thanks.
And Director Garcia.
Yes, mine was also just a comment more to Director Amundson, Clerk Amundson, is that I, I don't disagree that we should be seeking other options and opportunities now. And I think that we on the legislative committee and for my fellow committee members, please correct me if I'm wrong, is we're trying to figure out where we as a committee stand within the district to be able to do that. Because I think for us to become a little bit more politically savvy and, and asking for what we want and making those direct asks of our legislature is not inappropriate. And we just need to figure out how to do that in a way that feels good to our district. And, and being able to partner with others who want the same things that we do because, you know, we may be a smaller or medium-sized district in comparison to others, but we certainly don't have to do it alone. We're not the only ones that are going to be asking. And I think that to, you know, the adage of, we're going to have to figure out how to do more with less, I don't think that's appropriate for education anymore. I don't think it ever has been and I don't think that that should be our philosophy now. I recognize that we may have to make some difficult choices, but there are ways that we can make our voice heard at those tables. And I think it's time for our district to, to do that. And so the legis, or the legislative committee, we're trying to figure out what that looks like for us.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from board members? Director Barlow and then Director Nathan.
Yes, thank you. John, I just wanted to ask you to repeat something you said earlier through your forecast. And I appreciate the thoroughness in which you've done so. And I would hope the community as well as my fellow board members understood the clarity of your communication. We're, we're pretty good for the next year or two, okay? And you're not saying, don't bury your head or cover your ears. You're making us aware of three years out that, and, and you would certainly raise the flag or create the, sound the alarm should there be any significant difference and/or cost for us to be called into action, if you will. I guess I want to have that assurance and then also allay concerns of the community that we're not going to wait for something to happen and then try to dig ourselves out of it. Part of your job responsibility is to inform and brief us as you do multiple times during the course of each given year and budget cycle. And you will continue to do that, is that correct?
That's correct. I would say that we get better every year at using new tools that are available to us and that's why we're able to run you another forecast within a couple of days from our last meeting and update it almost to include real-time results of where we were through April 30th. And that was a tool we didn't have a few years ago. And, and I think that just helps guide us towards more realistic ending point numbers instead of just assuming the budget is the budget, we'll fully spend the budget even though we know we've had open positions and we haven't fully spent the budget this year. So I think, I think we've, we're, we're getting better at how we're doing this and hopefully our communication will stay as clear as possible that, yes, I believe we are good this coming school year, the next school year after this coming school year, it's that 2324 where it seems like we'll have some decision-making to do.
Okay, thank you.
Director Workman.
Yes, first of all, I would really like to compliment Director Garcia on how well she spoke about the legislative committee and I think she just really nailed it well. And I look forward to expanding our work next year. We got off to a kind of a rushed start this year and I felt like we were a little bit behind the curve some of the time, but I'm looking forward to, you know, bringing the committee together again, you know, in the fall before the legislature unit begins to, to meet. And I think it really would be helpful if this committee, the legislative committee and other key people in the district could actually have some really in-depth conversations about where we need to go, the kind of lobbying we need to do, understanding that we do have AMSD which, and MSBA and the superintendent group to rely on as well. But some things are very specific to Rochester and the legislature, I think, needs to hear from us on a much more organized, concerted, regular basis and speaking truth to power in all of this. And also, we, sometimes we tend to go around and somebody has an idea and it just kind of sits there or never gets advanced or, or I won't say voted on, but I'm very much interested in the ideas that Director Amundson put forth tonight as well. And I don't know if this is, I don't know how you'd put it on a future school board meeting and on that list or what you would call it, but I'd really like to keep this not too far on the back burner, middle burner maybe. So, thank you. And John, thank you for your work with your team. And I know it takes hundreds and hundreds and thousands of hours and lots of people working together and the leadership that we have on our, in this district is really, is really something to be proud of.
Thank you. Ms. Nathan, I think, I think we're getting closer to determining whether we want to move this to action. So Ms. Nathan, you may have, very possible, this will be the last word here.
Well, Mr. Carlson, I think you've said a few times that we don't know what the legislature is going to give us, whether it's 1% or 2%. And the legislative committee did a great job talking about the, the need to make our voice open to our legislators. But I think it's important to make the point that those watching from the community have now seen the numbers and know the benefit that it would be to our students and our schools if we were to get that 2%. And they are still negotiating the budget right now, but they have not yet determined whether or not it's going to be a 1% or a 2%. But the money is in the budget to give us a 2% increase. It's there. So if anybody watching this wants to contact their local legislator from Rochester and tell them how important a 2% increase for the district would be, anyone can feel free to do that as an individual citizen because I think we've seen what the benefit will be for the district. And especially in the next few days, because this is the time that negotiations are happening and, and conversations are happening behind the scene.
Thank you. And this has been a full-throated apolitical endorsement of people contacting their legislators. And we still need to vote, to move this to action. If we, right now, we need to focus on this budget. I think absolutely we got the message about having a committee talking about possible budget reduction or budget savings in the future. So I've got that written down. And Ms. Amundson, you may have the last word.
Oh, it, it wasn't intended to be the last word. I just wanted to add it on to what Director Nathan said about contacting legislators. And I wanted to add that for the folks that have never done that before, that can be a little bit intimidating the first time around. And so I would venture a guess that any of us would be willing to ask, answer questions for members of the public who would like to learn how to advocate for public education with local legislators. That, myself especially, I would be willing to answer any questions and please contact me if you'd like to learn how to be more proactive in advocacy.
Thank you, Director Amundson. Mr. Munoz?
Yes, I, I would encourage the board not to move this to action and just wait until the next meeting to take formal action on the budget.
That makes perfect sense. Thank you. And it is a briefing item now, it will be an action item on June 15th. Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent. Moving forward, 8.01 policies, this is the second reading of policies that were briefed at a previous meeting. Anybody from the policy committee have anything to say about that? We have them, they're available to the public to view. Anything from the policy committee?
I would, really quickly.
Ms. Nathan?
The board might notice a little change in our procedure in that we have, we briefed these at the May 18th meeting and we are briefing them again. We received an opinion from MSBA about the procedure with our briefing and action of policies. We received an opinion from MSBA about the procedure with our briefing and action of policies. That a policy should be on two agendas as briefing items, and then on a third meeting agenda for action. So we're beginning that practice with tonight's meeting. So that's why you're seeing these policies again, and they'll be an action item for the next meeting.
Thank you. And we can just never see them enough, so we appreciate this additional opportunity. Moving on then, 8.02, future school board discussion considerations. We have three items currently for consideration. First one, I think we need to consider tonight, it is the return to in-person school board meetings, June 15th. And the decision was that we will begin meeting in person at our next meeting, 5:30 on June 15th. And the consensus, as I understand it, is that for adults who have been fully vaccinated, masks will be optional. For students and those who have not been fully vaccinated, masks will be, I'm not sure that we can require them, but they're absolutely strongly recommended. Is there anything else we need to discuss about that? I know that the administration has determined a way that the board can meet, the cabinet can meet in the same room. There's still concerns about how many community members might want to be involved. Director Amundson.
Just a question. Is the plan for us to be back at the board table? Or is the plan for us to be at the larger seating arrangement that we sometimes do for study session?
Mr. Munoz.
Yes, back at your normal spot. And then the only change we'll make is we'll probably move the cabinet tables all along the entire north wall. So there's only one row of cabinet members. There's more distance. They can distance themselves. And then if we go down on the main floor with the board, then it limits the space that we can provide for those who come to watch the meeting.
Completely comfortable at the board table. Again, I was just curious as to what the plan was.
All right, thank you. I think then we've handled that one. The next issue was long-term superintendent process. The idea here was that board members have already been asked to consider individually the strengths or areas of concern about our process for the hiring of an interim superintendent. My recommendation, which we can discuss if you want, would be to have this discussion sometime this fall. All of us have thought, hopefully taken notes on what worked, what we might want to change, but have the discussion sometime early fall. Ms. Amundson.
I think that we should have the discussion earlier, because I think by fall, we want to begin the process. If we want to do a concerted public input program, sorry, my words aren't coming easily tonight, that might need to start in the fall, which means if we're going to look at the superintendent search firm hiring process, again, that would have to happen late summer, early fall. I know there are benefits to being on the front end of the superintendent search process in terms of candidates start accepting offers. So the earlier we can do it, the better, the pool, et cetera. So my mental timeline is that we're hiring somebody right around the time school starts. So I think if we're going to have a discussion as a board about how things went, I think that needs to be late summer.
All right. Ms. Workman.
I would pretty much agree what Director Amundson said. I think practically speaking, that most superintendents really don't start to make their move until January. But I also think that it is really important for the community, for us to have these processes set in place so that they know what the expectations are, how we're going to do it, and maybe even weigh in if they don't like an original proposal. So I think it's going to be a longer process than any of us have anticipated so far. And I think maybe having this at the first meeting in August might be doable so that we can at least, you know, kind of get a grip on where we're going. Or, you know, a study session.
All right. Mr. Barlow.
Well, I certainly support your chair Marvin initial thought. Perhaps you were reflecting on the process we just completed, still fresh in most of our minds, where we have the ability to draw from, well, from start to finish, required X amount of time. The truth of the matter is, a long-term search is not unlike an interim search. So we have familiarity, if you will. And I think, based on your initial recommendation, you know, fall, well, I'm here in August, well, okay. I think the point, again, is that we have tools and knowledge that really won't force our hands as if we have no experience or we have no background. And so I'm comfortable with what you suggested.
Thank you. And this isn't, we're not doing a vote on this. So if you're comfortable with this, the executive committee will take it under consideration and maybe second meeting in August. But we can certainly talk about what might make sense for that. Does that work for people? Ms. Workman.
Yes, I'd just like to remind everybody that the interim superintendent search was very truncated compared to what a long-term search would be, especially if we're considering a national search. We need to allow time for that. There was minimal community input. I thought the input that we got was excellent, but, you know, it needs to be the broader community. So from my perspective, I would rather start a little too soon than to start too late.
Okay, thank you for that. And that's exactly the kind of processing we'll do when we get to this. So thank you for that. The last issue is public comments. Currently, as you know, meetings are gavelled in at 5:30. And if we have people who are signed up to speak to the board in person, rather than sending an email, making a phone call, or sending a letter, they have the opportunity to show up, well, they will, in the boardroom to speak directly to the board, to remind us and the public, this is not an option for a dialogue. It is not an option to make a statement to the public. This is specifically designed so people can tell the board what they're thinking. One of the challenges we've had is that when we have people who want to speak to the board, we open meetings with that at 5:30, and then those, and they're not recorded. And then those who are listening at home or those who show up for meetings, the meeting may not be gavelled in until 5:45 or 6 o'clock. And it could be a little bit confusing for people trying to get on YouTube, and nothing's there. So I'm wondering if a good time to have that discussion, do we want to have one start time for public comments and another start time for the board meeting? Could we have that discussion in August, so something would be in place for the opening of the school year? Does that seem reasonable? Okay, we will plan that for an August agenda as well. Our next board meeting will be 5:30 on June 15th. We will then have meetings in July at 5:30, on July 13th, and July 27th. Are there other items that you would like to consider for future agenda items? I have already taken a note about a focus group or some sort of group to determine possible saving options going forward, if and when the board or the district needs to make cuts. Any other items for future agendas? Hearing none. It is 7:32, and we are adjourned. Thank you.